All right, the time is seven o'clock. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Lansing City Council for November 17th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Palli Vanaglu.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Garza is absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anyone we want to remember tonight before we do our meditation? Seeing none, can we please rise? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You have for approval the council proceedings of November 10th.
Vice President Carter.
I make a motion to approve the November 10th minutes as presented.
Okay, proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously.
And we are to table items. Item two, the establishment of a historic district study committee.
Okay. Vice President Carter.
I make a motion to remove item, tabled item off the table.
Okay, so we have a motion to untable the item. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously. This is going to get referred to public safety.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have item three, a special land use permit presentation.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so we, this is actually the first special land use request for 2025, and we did ask the applicant, Ms. Esther Winkenja, to be here. I am not seeing, if she is here, could you stand up and come down to the well? I'm not seeing her. So there may not be a special ceremony tonight. So if you want me to discuss this when we get to public hearing, I can.
Okay.
Okay, then we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Okay. Do we have councilmember comments? Councilman Spatafor.
Sure, I just want to reiterate for those of you in the West Side neighborhood that are interested in the CSO project and the trees affected by that project, we are having our public meeting with Public Service and Forestry tomorrow night at 5:00 PM at the Letts Community Center.
Thank you. And then I will add that the first ward is going to have a constituent contact meeting December 6th, 10:00 AM at the Guyer Community Center. Deep Green along with BWL will be there to present on the proposed data center along with answering all the questions. This is open to all residents of Lansing, and again, that's Guyer Community Center, 2400 Hall Street on the north end of Lansing.
Okay, we are to community event announcements. If you are in the audience and have any community events, we'll give you one minute to tell us about your event.
So this Wednesday, God, that's loud. This Wednesday, November 19th, will be the Old Everett Neighborhood Meeting, and it's going to be the last meeting of the year before January. We will be voting on our current board members as well as electing new board members, and we'll also be discussing our new bank account and the grants we're going to be applying for. So please stay tuned for that. And also, since I don't think the mayor is here, this Friday, Silverbells is coming up, just as a reminder. Five, I think it starts at like 5:00 to 5:30, I think-ish, around then, so the light parade at least, and I think there's also going to be a drone show, so stay tuned for that, and that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Other community events?
The League of Women Voters Lansing area is going to have a program on microplastics on November 24th at 7:00 at the East Lansing Library.
Thank you. Other community events? All right, seeing none, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, which includes the three public hearings as well as items seven through 14 on the printed council agenda, and we'll give you another minute to sign in with Sahad in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Lawrence. Okay. That saved us 20 minutes.
Okay. Then we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, there are public hearings. Item four, special land use for 3011 Turner. Item five is amending the noise ordinance regarding applicability and enforcement, and item six is amending chapter 294 to encourage the retention of the top official of the police and fire departments by extending eligibility for retirement services.
Okay. Item four, councilmember Hussein.
Sure, sure. In Councilman Garza's absence, I'll try to be brief. The application is for a special land use permit to authorize a state licensed adult foster care small group home at 3011 Turner Street. Proposal is to provide for assisted living for up to 12 residents. Home will be licensed and operated in accordance with all State of Michigan requirements for adult foster care group home facilities. Planning Commission did have a public hearing on September 2nd. The applicant spoke in favor, but there was no other public comment at that time. Subsequent to that, they did support out of the commission unanimously, SO recommendation to this body in terms of support. So, yeah, so tonight is a public hearing on that. Thank you.
Okay. And I have councilmember Palli Vanaglu for the next one.
Thank you, President Cost. As discussed last week, we have the ordinance to amend chapter 654, sections point 02, point 03, point 05, point 06, point 08, point 13, and point 14 to establish that the City of Lansing's regulation regarding noise applies to all properties within the city with limited exceptions, and to amend how such noise in the city is evaluated by removing references to decibel levels and instead adopting a plainly audible standard at various distances depending on the time of day. This also includes a definition for what plainly audible is. It does also address motor vehicle noise in terms of exhaust horns, music, or other loud or explosive noises that could be added to a vehicle, and it also addresses multi-unit residential dwellings with specific timeframes and a timeframe for disruptive noises, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, we have Vice President Carter for the last one.
Yes, this was stated again last week, but this is amending chapter 294 to encourage the retention of the top official of the fire and police departments by extending their eligibility for retirement service credits for up to 30 years, which is extending from the 25 years, and then if a member of retirement system who is currently employed by the city is promoted to a top official of either fire department or police department, then the member's credited service may exceed 25 years, but again, not more than 30 years, except that the retirement allowance shall not exceed 110% of the member's base wage.
Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker is Ivan Droste, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Ivan Droste, Ward three. I want to talk about the noise ordinance, and first, I just want to thank councilmember Jackson for speaking up about this at the last meeting. I really think you hit the nail right on the head. Surely, there probably are a small handful of people who deliberately modify their vehicle to make a lot of noise and disrupt people, but I'm very wary of trying to address a small handful of bad actors by equipping the police with a very large net that could affect a wide swath of people, including folks who are just trying to get around, who maybe just drive a crummy vehicle and they don't have the time or the money to fix it right now. I think that in this country, a lot of times when we identify a social ill, our knee-jerk reaction is to try to criminalize it and to police it, and we've kind of seen the disastrous effects of this, right? We really should be trying to reduce the number of police contacts with the general public, not increase them. So when we see something like this, I think that our instinct should be to instead try to identify what the root systemic cause is here, and in this case, I think that it's really the same systemic cause that lies at the heart of most of our transportation woes, which is car-centric infrastructure. If we had more meaningful alternatives to driving, then we would see fewer motor vehicles on the road, and we wouldn't have problems like this, at least not as much, right? So the solution really is to redesign our roads, take space and lanes away from motor vehicles, give them back to alternative forms of transportation, bus lanes, bike lanes, pedestrian walkways. We need to narrow lanes. We need to further adjust the physical characteristic of the road itself to reduce speeds and calm traffic, so we need speed humps, narrower lanes, parking on both sides of the lanes, roundabouts, things of this nature. Until we do that, there's really no genuine solution to any of these motor vehicle-related problems that we all deal with. This is a very long-term solution, so I want to offer a potentially short-term solution. There have been some community organizations who have done what they call like a pull-over prevention clinic or a pull-over prevention party or something like that. This is where they identify a location and a time, and they say, hey, bring your vehicle. If there's some small problem that your car has, like a headlight or a loose exhaust or something, we've got people here who know how to fix that. That will keep you on the street, prevent you from being pulled over, reduce the number of police contacts, and will keep everybody safe in that way. If it's something that a few people can do on a shoestring budget, I think it's something the city can do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Joanne Galloway.
Okay, this is about the Consumers Energy easement that's being proposed for running eastward from Aurelius Road on the south side of Mount Hope all the way to 127, fronting Evergreen Cemetery as well as Fenner Nature Center. I'll be focusing on the Evergreen Cemetery part. We determined early on that for our sake, there was virtually no negative in this, so we were not terribly concerned, but then we started thinking longer term, and we realized that, given the fact that utility companies have not proven over the years to be reliable promise keepers, we wanted to have something in place that guaranteed that in the future they could not come back in perpetuity and decide to do anything, anytime, anywhere to this place that they have the easement on. So we have been through several meetings with the Planning and Development Committee and found Jeremy and Ryan and Adam to be very helpful in listening and to advocate with us for a stipulation to be put into the easement that prohibits consumers from going back in perpetuity, doing anything they want, anytime they want, anyhow they want. We were able to achieve that. We also asked for and received a commitment to have the comparative funds for the Evergreen portion to go into the Cemetery Enterprise Fund, so $2,225 of the easement funds will go into the Cemetery Enterprise Fund. So a couple of the things we learned along this way was that we felt there should be some room for improvement in the future. One thing is that we think there should be better evaluations of the value and worth of trees. The trees should be identified when these proposals come forward and determined, you know, do an inventory, do an assessment, do a valuation for each tree, and get its market value rather than just a blank $500 per tree that was offered by consumers. And there needs to be some better negotiating from the city in terms of what they ask for and accept from consumers for land values as well. The only other thing that we thought might be helpful in the future was to make sure that when there's situations like this where different documents contain different portions of the agreement, that they both be included in the packet for the council, because tonight we have the agreement for the stipulation is in the contract, and the agreement for the funding resolution or funding to the Enterprise Fund is in the resolution. So there are two different documents with two different portions of this agreement, and it would be very helpful if they both were available to the public and increase transparency. So for the short term, we think we did pretty well getting the things that we asked for, and we appreciate the city's cooperation, and we look forward to making some changes in the future. Maybe this stipulation could become a template for the multiple easement requests that we know are coming in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joanne Galloway, followed by Eric Elmquist.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Galloway from the second ward. It's taken me a while to remember what ward I live in. Anyway, I am here this evening to speak about the Utility Easement along Fenner and the Evergreen Cemetery, and just to be transparent, I want to also mention that this Consumers Energy gas pipeline project does also go through my husband and my property as well that's just to the east and south, north, excuse me, of Evergreen Cemetery. And as a matter of fact, one of the reasons that many people might speak about this tonight is because it does go across our property, and that's how I became aware of the project. And it was one day when Scott from Consumers was standing in my driveway, and he mentioned having spoken at some city council committee meeting. I was like, wait, like what committee? So I learned about the Committee on Development and Planning, and as Loretta said, Ryan and hold on a second here, I had their names written down. Councilman Cost, Councilman Hussein, and Councilman Garza have done an excellent job of being very respectful to the community that has come and asked questions and expressed concerns. They each have really shown a lot of diligence to want good, solid answers before making a decision, and we really, really do appreciate that. And I do want to thank the community members who have responded to my social media posts and taken an interest in especially protecting the property along Fenner Nature Center, and also, you know, appreciate them being engaged and showing up. So it was really important to us. Initially, we really spent a lot of time diagnosing, like what exactly is Consumers planning to do, but then we really drew the conclusion after lots of people pointed out that companies like Consumers are well-known to do what they say they won't do and not do what they said they would do. So that kind of became not the point anymore, and I just share that with each of you to, you know, if you've been to a car sales place that really was trying to take advantage of you, think of that when you're thinking of Consumers Energy. Please, don't believe everything that they're going to say. So that's why we worked in the direction of being, wanting to get some language in there that would keep them focused on doing the project that they are going to do now and not being able to do anything else in the future without further permission from this body. We also are very concerned yet, in this moment, that we haven't done a thorough evaluation as a city as to what the value is, that they'll be interrupting there and thinking about how that value extends over the whole property, and that's something I would really encourage the council not to move on this issue tonight and go back to our Parks and Rec Department and our foresters and consider seeking outside counsel to make sure that we as a city are getting what we deserve for what we're giving up there at Fenner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Elmquist, followed by Donald Dean.
Thank you, guys, for giving me this time to be here. I want to talk about the easement as well and witness trees. Witness trees is about 200 years old, and we have the potential for some to be older than that. We're coming up on our 250th anniversary as a country, and it's potential that these trees were here before we became a country. Very important we protect them, and I have concerns about Consumers Energy, whether it was in 2010 when they clear cut acres of land and were taken to court, went to appeals, and it came out and they were found guilty of that, or in 2013 when unions came in and negotiated with them to go ahead, we wanted to train your meter readers to go ahead and go out there. Unions did their job. Consumers Energy didn't have people reading. We had no readings in four years at my house, and so, and when we asked them to go ahead and correct that, they still didn't correct it. So it's an issue saying where they're going to take care of stuff, they don't take care of things. I had some questions for Consumers Energy, so I went to the planning meeting, but they didn't show up. I just got out of surgery, and I think it's important enough to show up, and I'm thinking, this is important for them, maybe they should show up, but they're not showing up. Instead, we have a public servant talking for them and talking for how Michigan State University, the plant, would be impacted. That's not the job of a civil servant to talk for those, they're here to represent the citizens. If MSU has an interest in it, MSU needs to show up at the planning committees, to show up here. If Consumers Energy has an interest in it, they need to show up here as well, but neither here, so I'm not sure why we're talking about those folks. If MSU, they have a sustainability office, they can come out here and do that. The last thing I'm concerned about is any trimming, any work on the trees, any directional boring will be done by qualified subcontractors. Now, Mr. Garza talked about, he's very familiar with directional boring, and I trust him and I trust unions. I would much rather see unions out there taking care of this stuff than qualified contractors. There's a chance now that some people have said that the city council is ineffective. I do not believe that at all. This is a chance, as you close out this year, to show how effective you are and show what you guys can do, and I believe you guys can do that, and I have faith in you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next is Donald Dean, followed by Nicholas Zande. It's really helpful in the future if you give it to our intern in the back before you, when you sign up, just so, just so folks know.
Okay, sorry about that, Chris.
Just trying to let everybody know.
Okay, I'm going to let you, I apologize for that. I didn't, didn't. Okay.
Okay, so as you know, I'm Don Dean, and good evening. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm asking to reject this corridor and direct Consumers Energy to build the gas line elsewhere away from the northern edge of Fenner Nature Center and Evergreen Cemetery. First, the corridor is the wrong place. Mount Hope's south edge is a living buffer for a nature center and a cemetery, two of the most sensitive land uses we steward as a city. The current proposal puts a perpetual 15-foot easement, this is based on my previous knowledge, inside that edge for $1 in a token of $2,200 to the cemetery fund, a permanent transfer of control that the public would normally expect to vote on if this were a sale of parkland. Even the Lansing State Journal has documented residents' alarm at the easement for Everright across Fenner and Evergreen. Second, economics for the city simply do not add up. An ISA standard appraisal puts a healthy 30-inch DBH oak in an urban setting at roughly $20,000 to $30,000. I did estimates on those trees. Some of them, at least three of them, are over $100,000. Because our urban trees provide measurable stormwater control, shade, carbon storage, and cultural value, one mature tree can exceed the entire cemetery fund payment here, and we're talking about a corridor of mature canopy. That is not stewardship, that's a giveaway. Third, there are better proven design options, and the federal playbook says so. The Federal Highway Administration Wildfire Crossing Program synthesizes decades of results. Properly designed fencing and crossings reduce wildlife vehicle collisions by up to 80% to 97%. If council won't relocate the line, the minimum is to mitigate, but the right step is to avoid the conflict by putting the line elsewhere rather than carving a new permanent utility corridor through a high-value edge. Fourth, the process gap is real. We do not even have corridor-specific crash data. Statewide and county totals are clear, but no one has analyzed Mount Hope specifically. Approving a perpetual easement without localized safety data is premature, especially when a viable alternative is to route the pipe elsewhere away from the highest-risk edge. Fifth, alignment creates avoidable public safety risk. The stretch of Mount Hope and Harrison, just Mount Hope, feeds directly to McLaren, feeds Harrison, it feeds to Harrison and Mount Hope and to Aurelius to get to McLaren. Any lane restrictions during installation and future reentries for maintenance raise the odds of ambulance delay exactly when minutes matter. That's not hypothetical. Michigan recorded 58,000. I'll finish on my next minute.
Thank you. Finally, we have Nicholas Zande.
I am Nicholas Zande. The name is Nick Zande, N-I-C-K-L-A-S space Z-A-N-D-E. Don't want to waste my time on that. And I'm going to be speaking first on the whole thing with the Consumers Energy pipeline around Fenner and Evergreen. Bad idea. Zero of 10. That is not a good place to put it. And it is, quite frankly, just to, not to steal Adam Hussein's catchphrase, but I'm going to be honest, if this were done by BWL, this probably would just not have happened because by then they would have to listen to the public since they are a public company, unlike Consumers, which is private. Having said that, speaking of that, I will be speaking on item eight as well, that is supporting food rescue organizations. I think that considering the SNAP benefits being on the line because of the recent shutdown, I do believe that this is a worthwhile thing to do. However, if in the off-chance that SNAP does cease to exist, which I hope doesn't happen, we may have to go further on this, and it pains me to say it, we might, we as a city might have to do the nuclear option and consider a public supermarket option. As much as I hate to say it, I normally would not support something like this, but given that we're in, given the rate of inflation and SNAP being just straight up unreliable right now because of you-know-who, it just makes public options, like even in supermarkets, kind of inevitable in unfortunate economic times. I mean, considering FDR during the Great Depression, he had to create Public Works, and I think he even created some public markets and created Social Security, but in cases like that, because there was a Great Depression going on, he had to do it. He had to take very disparate measures just to get, just to set the economy right and get it going again and put people back to work. So I think it should be considered, and also, on that whole thing of the pipeline, do not support this, this is just a bad idea, and I don't know if I, and I've never trusted Consumers Energy with really anything. I mean, I don't know if I trust the BWL, but at least I can give them their input directly, but as for Consumers Energy, I can only give anyone in Consumers Energy input at this very meeting indirectly, so that's all I'm going to say, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. We are to the referral of the public hearings. Item four, SLU one.
Development and planning.
Item five, the noise ordinance.
Public safety.
Item six, the retirement ordinance.
Committee of the whole.
We are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will move the following consent agenda items, setting a public hearing on Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, Oprah District 323-327, South Washington Square, Warmwood LLC, supporting food rescue organizations, and yeah, I think that's it.
Proper motion in place.
It's normally not that short.
No. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously.
Okay, resolutions for action. Item nine is the utility easement.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, and this was, you know, subject of most of the public comment tonight, but in any event, for public certification, Consumers Energy But in any event, for public satisfaction, Consumers Energy has requested a 15-foot-wide utility easement along the northern border of Fenner Nature Center and Evergreen Cemetery, which is adjacent to Mount Hope Road. Purposes to build a new 12-inch natural gas pipeline. It was referenced earlier that the actual installation will be by way of trenchless underground boring. We are, as a body, being asked to approve the request to create a utility easement. There has been quite a bit, or was quite a bit, of work done at the committee level, and I will say that was spurred on by really tremendous community input. So we heard from Don tonight, and we heard from Ms. Galloway tonight, and Loretta, and Eric, and the list goes on. But a number of folks in committee asking some really good questions, and I helped, and I think helped really drive the process. The matter was tabled and untabled a couple of times, so the city attorney and administration could continue to negotiate with consumers on an agreement that would satisfy some of the concerns coming from the community, as well as respective committee members. Concerns over tree removal, easement language amendments to ensure that post-construction, any significant alteration to the property within the easement would first come back to council for approval, adequate compensation for the loss of trees. We even discussed migratory patterns of birds and bats and things of that nature. But again, the committee felt like those were broached and addressed. So we eventually did move this out of committee unanimously at our November 12 meeting. Easement agreement does state that the City of Lansing will not plant any trees or install any improvements within the easement area, and that consumers must restore any area of the easement damage during the original installation, maintenance, repair, replacement, or removal of Consumers' facilities to its previous condition is reasonably practical. There was a significant change in terms of the resolution that was actually referred to committee, and that was the insertion of the language, and Ms. Danaway spoke about this earlier, of the language to reflect that the $2,225 of the net proceeds from the easement shall be deposited directly into the Cemetery Enterprise Fund. And that was contemplated due to tree removal, as well as square footage in terms of that, that actual property subject to Evergreen. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to share a few reasons why I will not support it. The public comment is one, but also, natural gas is not a clean energy. And by building more natural gas infrastructure, if we, the state, the city, whoever, follows the carbon reduction plan to save our planet, if we follow that, the recommendation is do not continue to build fossil fuel or natural gas infrastructure. So, you know, we, after this whole, basically ultimatum, not to build, that is bad, you know, we made our natural gas plants after that. But this isn't the same. This is just, it seems like a pipeline or something. So we don't want to continue to build out natural gas infrastructure. It will be a stranded asset, meaning that it won't, if we do what we're supposed to do, it won't even get to use it till its end days. And we also shouldn't support it. So I won't be, thank you.
Any further comment? Councilmember Hussein.
Regardless of where folks land, I do want to recognize the fact that we have Brett Kishinsky in the audience, who was with us during the committee process and was involved in all the behind-the-curtain work. Folks like Dominic, obviously, from forestry, really appreciate all the work you all put into this. And then also, the city attorney's office. I think, you know, and again, huge shout-out to the community. I thought you guys were tremendous in terms of working with us, helping to move the dial. And I think in the future, you know, we have a, maybe not a perfect template, but a better template than what we had. And so we really appreciate everybody working toward that end. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Greg, Mr. City Attorney, if I could broach the issue that was brought up about money and trees, in an easement project like this, because I'm not familiar enough with it, do we typically, I mean, can we typically negotiate for more money? Or is this kind of a standard thing utility companies do?
It depends. So it's a yes and a no. There is a, there are generally accepted market standards for essentially price per linear foot of certain sizes of pipeline. And these are sort of recognized across the industry. So Consumers, Border Water and Light, they kind of play from the same playbook in terms of if something is underground, if something is overhead, what's the, what's the value of that easement? So that's pretty much standard. In terms of price per tree, I don't know. I know that there is a standard value that they usually assign, and it usually comes down to size of tree and dollar amount per size of tree. But I, I have not interacted with enough easements that reference that as the calculation. So I think probably Brett is better able to answer that, but, well, yeah, that's the best answer I can give.
All right. Brett, if you could just quickly come down. Sorry, I don't want to delay anybody.
So we did have discussions with consumers about the trees. And in terms of the $500 amount for the amount of the size of the tree and the species of the trees that are being removed, the city forester and myself were very comfortable with moving that ahead.
And then Councilwoman Pelley Van Gogh.
Thank you, President Cost. And I guess this question may be geared toward committee members, or maybe even Director Kishinsky. I guess my question is, if this, if this does not go through, if this is not granted, what is the alternative? I mean, I, I have followed a few of your committee meetings, and my assumption is that we, this is being done for a reason, it needs to be upgraded. So if this is not granted, then what happens? What is the alternative there? And what is the impact on the area or our community overall?
So this is a high-pressure gas line that runs along the south side of Mount Hope from Aurelius east to 127. And it connects a network of natural gas throughout the city from consumers. There is a line there currently. You cannot run, construct another high-pressure gas line right next to the one that is currently in place. Too dangerous. So we have to move, and that is the reason for this easement to extend to the south. The life expectancy of the high-pressure gas line that is currently in place is in need of replacement. And so that is the reason for going further to the south, away from that existing high-pressure gas line, to be able to put this one in. In terms of where else could it go? You know, we have asked about, do you put it under Mount Hope? Well, now, if you have a problem with your high-pressure gas line, it would be under Mount Hope Avenue. And there are some issues with that. Number one being, there's other utilities could be under there. The other thing is, you have to have, there are already some tubes that come out above ground for them to be able to maintain and work with that high-pressure gas line.
So essentially, you're saying that the reason for the distance between the current line and the new line that should go in because of the age of the current line, I mean, this really all speaks to being a safety issue with the high-pressure.
Exactly. You do not want to be within close proximity, as you're doing a directional bore, of the existing high-pressure gas line.
Okay, do we have any, any more questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. You said that the first high-pressure pipeline is near the end of its time for repair. How long has that been, do you know approximately? I heard someone say 1953, okay. So what happens when this new one needs to be repaired? Do you then have to carve out a new place?
So we did ask that question. And when that existing line is then taken out of service, consumers would be able to go back to the original area for a line 80 years from now. Not knowing what the technology may be at that time either, to say if there may be a new way to do it. But with current, what we're talking about in the easement is yes. When that original line goes offline, they can go back to that northern part and run a new gas line through that area, removing the old pipe.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, there is a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Passes seven, six, one.
Okay, we are to item 10, obsolete property rehabilitation district for 414 Baker Street.
And that is, Councilmember Hussein, thank you for coming down, Brett.
Yeah, thanks to, actually, the applicant is here tonight, Mr. Max Bortz. He's been with us every step of the process, so I want to thank him first and foremost, I think, for his commitment to this, to this property, restoration of this property, but also to this body's process. In any event, the request before us is for a obsolete property rehabilitation district for 414 Baker Street. The city assessor has determined that the address meets the requirements set forth in the Act by way of obsolescence. By creating the district, you'll notice that sometimes we're asked to create the district and approve a certificate at the same time. That is not happening in this case. But by creating the district, the applicant would then be allowed to proceed with certain activities to stabilize the property and prevent further deterioration while exploring kind of, you know, their build-out, their financing for the project, and then potentially an open certificate down the line, which would come back to this council for consideration and approval. The applicant intends to rejuvenate this property as a mixed-use duplex. Total investment projected to be close to $437,000. Each unit will have ground floor, front-of-building, entry park, flex space of about 1,000 square feet. Each unit will have also residential space on the second floor with two-bedroom, 1,000-square-foot of living space. It was discussed that one would be marketed toward 80% AMI, and the other would be at 100% AMI. Applicant has done similar rehab projects at 117 East Kalamazoo Street, as well as 913 West Saginaw Street in Lansing. We did have a public hearing last Monday. We did not, whether that be committee process, whether it be the process out in front of council as part of these proceedings, we did not have any comment that was in opposition. So with that being said, I would move the.
Those in favor say aye. Aye.
For 1204 South Washington Avenue.
And that's Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, and similar to my, my comments with Max, in this case, we have had Chris Rockwell, as well as Emily Walensky with us every step of the way. And Emily, we appreciate you being here tonight. In any event, the Little Rock Ventures LLC has requested establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district property. This one is at 1204 South Washington Avenue. This would allow them to, again, much in the way of the last resolution, to proceed with certain activities to stabilize, to prevent further deterioration, as they too contemplate build-out and work to put financing together in a potential application for an open certificate. This is a two-story mixed-use commercial building, was constructed in the early 1900s. Again, the property's been inspected by the city assessor, determined to suffer from functional obsolescence. The applicant intends to rehabilitate the facility by combining ground-floor gallery space with upper-floor residential. Rehab work is expected to include full interior renovation, structural repairs, new HVAC, electrical and plumbing systems, facade restoration, accessibility improvements, and interior build-out for gallery and residential use. The estimated construction costs are approximately $350,000. We had a public hearing last Monday, and again, no opposition was heard. And so we did approve this unanimously out of DNP for recommendation of this body. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Proper motion is in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction and setting of public hearings. We have item 12, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter 812, Section 812.01 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances to modify the boundaries of the principal shopping district as well as Zone B and C North. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Vice President Carter.
Thank you, President Cost. Clerk, well, you pretty much covered it. But again, this is just overall increasing the current boundaries in the principal shopping district, again, for Zone B and Zone C North when the public, with the public's hearing scheduled for December 8.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place for a public hearing December 8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we have item 13, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lansing by adding a new Section 888.35 for the purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for 136 low-income family dwelling units in a project known as Pine Brook Manor pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966, Public Act 346 of 1966 as amended, MCL 125.1401 at sec the Act. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
And again, I think you covered most of it. With this particular applicant, Standard Communities is looking for, is a 45-year, 6.6% pilot with the City of Lansing. They, all we're doing tonight essentially is setting a public hearing. They will actually be in front of this body on December 8, the night of the public hearing, to, to present in depth the request. They are actually looking to acquire this property. As part of that acquisition, and they'll talk a little bit about this, there would be an uncapping of their taxable value. And so it would reset essentially to the assessed value. And so for that reason, they are, they're looking for a pilot. Also, they want to be able to honor some of their low-income, some of their affordability commitments that they will have with some of the partners that will help to finance this. So in any event, again, they will be here on the 8th to present in depth. And with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Item 14 is an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances, Chapter 1460, Section 1460.51, to add an exemption from collection of the, a tenant relocation fee if the owner or party in interest demonstrates by clear and convincing evidence that the conditions that caused a rental premises being declared unsafe and uninhabitable were directly attributable to the tenant. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Public Safety.
Vice President Carter.
Thank you, President Cost. Yes, just to add to that, there was another piece that we spoke about in Committee of the Whole, that the owner or party in interest may be exempt from collection of the tenant relocation fee under subsection C if within 10 days after a rental premises is vacated, as described in subsection A, the owner or proper, owner or party in interest demonstrates to the Office of Code Compliance with the review by the Office of the City Attorney by clear and convincing evidence in writing that the conditions that caused the rental premises being declared unsafe and uninhabitable were directly attributable to the tenants or tenants. So with that, I move the resolution.
Okay, proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for city government-related matters. That is the yellow sheet in the back. We'll give you about another minute to sign in, if you have not already done so. And in the meantime, we are to the referral items.
Vice President Carter.
I motion that all items be considered being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by President Cost.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
We have, from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Please unveil.
From the mayor, Z1, 2025, 3310 West Mount Hope, rezoning to multifamily residential district, two items.
Development and planning.
Z3, 2025, 117 Island Avenue, rezoning to mixed-use urban corridor. Two items for that.
Development and planning.
We have Act 5, 2025, acquisition of property in the 600 block of West Fairfield Avenue for incorporation into Jones Lake Park.
Development and planning.
Act 6, 2025, purchase of property 5400 block of South Waverly to extend the South Lansing pathway.
Development and planning.
Ways and Means, the issuance of sewage disposal system revenue bonds.
Well, ways and means. Well, ways and means, I guess, since you already called it out.
I'm sorry, did I say that?
Yeah. You're good.
Communications and petitions, a claim appeal for Megan Broyles for trash fees at two seventeen Rita.
City operations.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Okay, Vice President Carter.
I make a motion to excuse Councilman Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
And remarks by council members.
Do we have any further remarks by council members? No takers.
The executive assistant to the mayor.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, public comment on city government-related matters. We have Donald Dean, followed by Nicholas Sandy.
Finish this up. I did speak with Brett and, and got a little bit more detail about it. However, let me go ahead and finish up this. So I'm going to start back with the, with the fifth paragraph. This stretch of Mount Hope feeds the ER McLaren, and basically, depending on whether they replaced the fencing, or I guess it's a directional boring, so they shouldn't be disturbing a lot, but if you look in your packet, I did, I did research on it, and basically, they, 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 from my understanding, utility companies have to put in a, they, they have, they have to clear, clear it out somewhat because of, of the access issues if there's an emergency. So that, that's actually a federal or state, I can't remember which state law that they have to do that. So do your research and, look at that, and then go, go ahead and do your own research. So one of my, one of my biggest concerns is, I mean, obviously, I don't live right there, but deer crashes, the last year, or either last year and 2023, they killed nineteen people. And Mount Hope is at forty-five miles an hour, and if you don't think forty-five an hour, forty-five miles an hour is fast enough to kill someone, I can assure you that if you don't have your seatbelt on, you, you'll be either dead or you'll be severely damaged. So actually, it's a sixth. I'm not against arguing against safety. Michigan gas, gas safety standards adopt federal pipeline rules for safer access and inspection. At the same time, NREP, A, and standard integrated vegetation management practices require carefully selective clearing, seasonal restrictions for nesting birds and migration, you guys talked about that, and sensitive habitat. You can't square that with perpetual, and so we, we squared that. So, and then, then also, for the cemeteries, the seventh, the seventh one is, is that there's a thing for cemeteries, and basically, my whole thing is, let's make sure that we do our study on it, really, before we go forward on it.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Sandy, followed by Elaine Fishoff.
So today I'm going to be speaking about the cat bus route six and why I don't think the current route as it is, is adequate for being a full-on route. Because all route six does is just go around the Ingham County Health Department building on a loop, and only for like a limited time. Apparently, it's like until like five o'clock, I think, which essentially means it's just can't really be used for most of the day. And it also just can't be used on weekends because I don't know if it's open on weekends. And because of that, there needs to be a serious look at route six, and that it needs to be expanded. Now, obviously, I don't know if it's, we should expand this beyond the borders of the City of Lansing, obviously, considering that Delta Charter Township already voted it down, unfortunately, and they've already, and they're starting to delete an expansion. But within the City of Lansing, I believe, is somewhat doable. And I think that route six should cover almost all of Jolly Road in the City of Lansing from east to west. And it should, while I do think there should be a loop, still be a loop around Health and Human Services, like on weekdays, the same goes for like the visitor center, as well as the new clerk's office, and the, but also, I think that it needs, that Jolly Road needs to have a connector route between different cat buses. Routes two, five, seven, eight, nine, all need to be connected from east to west on Jolly Road. Without a connection like that, it's going to be really hard for people to go from one area to another, and for people to have to go through Meyer, which is like the long way around. And walking across from one route to another is not easy, and can take a while. I know that you could technically go from like five through to eight just by going on routes, part of route six, but even then, that might actually slow you down because it might be faster to walk, which is kind of unfortunate. So because of that, route six, Salacata, route six, needs to be expanded to cover almost all of Jolly Road so that there can be more of a connection between those routes, just as we do route eighteen on Mount Hope. That's all I'm going to say, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Elaine Fishoff, followed by Mrs. Wilson.
Hi, I'm, I'm Elaine Derwefischoff. I'm a Lansing resident and a BWL customer. I'm bringing this BWL issue to the council because good governance is involved, as well as the board members whom this body approves. Tomorrow night, a resolution recommended by management will be considered by the commissioners. The city charter provides, the board shall make all contracts pertaining to the conduct of BWL business. The resolution in question would delegate all of the board's contractual authority, both for negotiating and approving a contract for all future data centers to one man, the general manager. The board will likely approve the data center resolution, whether it is in the interests of the Lansing taxpayers and BWL's customers to add data centers, and if so, what risks must be addressed in any contract are high-level strategic decisions that should be made by the board after board discussion, independent expert advice, and public input, not by one fallible person. The board members are the Lansing taxpayers' voice in all matters of BWL governance. The resolution muzzles, muzzles the voice of the board and in turn, the voice of the public. The MPSC has considered data center contracts. On November sixth, it issued an order to, involving consumers' power, requiring it to include in all of its data center contracts, nine categories of provisions for protecting its customers from paying any data center costs. There's nothing in the BWL resolution required in those provisions. Lansing taxpayers and BWL customers are not protected. If the data center fails, the Lansing taxpayer will ultimately pay the costs. Data center are very controversial issue because of the land use, power needed, emissions, water demand, and noise. In addition, they don't create very many jobs. Elsewhere, the public has shown it cares whether a data center will be sited near their neighborhood. BWL has become a black box where public has no meaningful opportunity to express its opinions about BWL decisions and plans, and now the board will have no say in data center contracts, as well as the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mrs. Wilson, followed by Joanne Galloway.
Mrs. Wilson, South Lansing, I want to speak about the homeless pods. I don't think it's a good idea to have the mod pods at the old Washington Park because, for one, it is too close to the already notorious Capital City Apartments located on 3200 South Washington Avenue. The city already has their hands full overlooking that. It will cause an eyesore for South Lansing and deter people away from coming to one of the local major grocery stores in the area, which is Kroger's. Kroger's is already becoming known as unsavory, as an, as an unsavory store to shop at as it is. It would burden Kroger's and customers of having to fend off more panhandling that already exists at the store. Is it fair or legal to place the pods in a city public park when technically, other residents have to vacate by dusting the taxpayers? Therefore, are we also paying for them to reside in the park? Why not consider using many of our already abandoned buildings to put them in with monitoring and supervision? Put them in that abandoned building on nine two seven South Washington Avenue, what used to be the Washington Apartments. If the city is going to provide them services, then they should give back and pay it forward by volunteering their time to clean up excessive litter around the City of Lansing. That's just one example. Work with the Lansing City, sorry, work with the Lansing City Rescue Mission and other organizations that have experience in homelessness and displacement. Make sure their mental health issues are addressed to help with their situations. Panhandling shouldn't, should be banned in the City of Lansing, period. It makes, it makes, excuse me, it makes Lansing look bad. Honestly, I don't see them over in Grand Ledge, Delta Township, East Lansing, or Oakhamus. Okay. Last but not least, what is going on with the now-defunct Sycamore Apartments? It looks awful. Another eyesore in Lansing. And I think I didn't say for the Washington Park, it's now called the Debbie Stepanow Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joanne Galloway, followed by Cheryl Brand.
Good evening, Joanne Galloway. President Cost, would you consider allowing me to yield my time to one of our community members whose work conflicts regularly with this meeting, and who has just arrived and wasn't able to check in?
Yeah, we can't because they didn't sign in. It's past the deadline.
Understood. Thank you for the consideration. Again, I'm Joanne Galloway. I live on Mount Hope Avenue, and tonight, I'm wearing the Rent Is Too Damn High shirt. We are living in an existential housing crisis. We, as a country, are not supporting our residents with the community, or excuse me, the mental health supports that they need, and this city is in a crisis. We probably have potentially 400 people who are sleeping outside somewhere every night. I can't even imagine what it's like to be outside all day, even in just these temperatures, and then to imagine trying to stay warm all night. The approach that I've seen from the city at this point in time seems to be like we're prioritizing how we're managing our wooded areas by clearing places because we've sighted people finding refuge there. I heard our Parks and Rec Director at a community meeting this summer kind of brag that he starts his morning out by running the trail, seeing where there's people who have trespassed on our parks overnight. I would like to ask that this council consider rewriting or relaxing some of our regulations because we have neighbors who need a place to be. They need a place to be, and we need to take responsibility for helping taking care of the people who are among us who need us the most. And what we don't need to be doing is sending a city attorney to the courthouse across town here on Wednesdays, who's not telling the truth, and who is implying that things are happening among our homeless population that are not. Two weeks in a row, I have heard Matt Staples say, "We're working on getting water out there." Keep in mind, Judge Akina has ordered the city to supply water to that camp. Two weeks in a row, we're working on it. But once we realize they're out of water, it takes so much to coordinate with the other city departments. It's like, maybe you should put in a standing order to figure out how much water sixty each people might need in a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheryl Brand.
During the 2013 ICE blackout in Lansing, I was in my home for five of the seven days without power. I had a roof over my head, I had food, water, any medication I might need. I retained a sense of physical safety and slept on a mat, mattress with every blanket I could muster. I had everything our homeless lack except heat. Those five days caused such psychological and emotional trauma that I was crazy, and that lasted weeks after the heat was restored, and in many ways, I still carry. I spent the next several years putting in place everything I could think of to ensure I would never be cold like that again, after five days. I share this because I am disgusted by how these human beings are treated. Fortunately, the city's decision to sue those attempting to offer space for the Fallen Angel Camp has brought so many organizations and volunteers to light who provide whatever they can for all Lansing's homeless, and a giant spotlight on the unconscionable cruelty many of our city government agencies inflict upon these human beings. While there is a court order for a temporary stay in criminalizing these people at this site, that order mandates porta potties and trash removal and water. The porta potties were installed with hand washing stations until recently, when the stations removed so they wouldn't freeze. I find it hard to believe there isn't something safe that can be added so the water doesn't freeze, or some other option. Or are there absolutely no outside hand stations in Michigan right now? As for the trash, there is a huge dumpster, which is full, overflowing, and has trash around it. There are also lined trash barrels throughout the site, which are full, overflowing, and have trash around them. So the city initiated these things and provided no follow-through? Was cruelty the intent when giving these human beings some basic needs to make their living conditions just a microscopic bit more comfortable and humane, only to withhold it? Or was it muscle memory to negate and ignore them? The city originally claimed the camp was a public health crisis, so the go-to move is to withhold cleaning stations, trash removal, and my number one interest tonight, the withholding of water. City Attorney Staples, for weeks now, has said it's being worked on. Really? Do you have to wait for a committee consensus, paperwork, signatures, or empathy to get water? Perhaps if the City Attorney Staples and Mayor Shore spent two days and one night out there, things would get done. These beautiful human beings require the exact same things you do every day: shelter, food, water, safety, and human dignity. Since the city went down this legal road, there should be scheduled trash removal, scheduled porta potty cleanup, and scheduled water delivery. In my opinion, the city is in contempt of court. The judge has provided contact avenues for us to keep her informed, and don't you think we won't? The city must do better.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
All right. Quickly, I will just tell this council that the trash was picked up today. OCA worked on that, and they're also working on hand sanitizer because the hand washing stations do freeze in the winter, so we're working on that as well. I typically wouldn't do something like that, just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware. And so with that, we are adjourned at eight ten.